Exactly. And I'll call the meeting to order. And if you can call a vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Present.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Collier.
Here.
Mr. Beazold is absent. Mr. Peterman.
Here.
Mr. Blau.
Here.
Okay, this is a time we're gonna stand up. Would you girls like to come up here and start us on the pledge to allegiance? Can you do that? There's the flag. You just started for us. Ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, boys. I appreciate that. All right, good job. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the December 16th meeting. I'd move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye.
All right, we're down to visitors communications. We're starting out with the badge pinning. Chief Bailey, take it away.
Congressman Mayor Haas, members of council, Mr. Dill, Mr. Ewol. City staff president for citizens at home here in Fort Thomas. It is my privilege and pleasure to stand before you this evening to introduce to you our newest firefighter, paramedic that gets us, I'm excited, I'm not sure who's more excited, myself or Matt, but that gets us back up to a full complement of 18 firefighter paramedics. So Matt, if you come forward, this is Matthew Feit. Matthew started with us yesterday and he's in our two-week orientation period. And then he'll go on shift with Captain Lump, shift in shift one on January the 21st. But Matt, born, raised in Dayton, Kentucky, so a Campbell County young man. And has had some stints with Wilder, Edgewood, and most recently, the Florence Fire Department. So we're excited to have Matt join the city of Fort Thomas and the Fort Thomas Fire Department family. Like I said, Captain Lump's here tonight, as well as shift two that's on duty, Captain Darty. And so we're pleased to have Matt become a part of our family and gets us again back up to complement, which makes the chief feel a lot better also, that we've got everybody here that we need to have. So, and thanks, thanks to you all for doing that. But it's my privilege and pleasure, like I said, to introduce Matt. Matt will wear badge number 11 and helmet number 662. So we'll go ahead and pin the badge on Matt at this time.
He's still a young man. So congratulations.
Right.
Would you like to introduce your family, I think?
Absolutely.
And again, if you have any words for council, let me introduce your family, please.
I'm very excited to be here. Since I was young, I wanted to be here. And I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I wouldn't squander it. But I wouldn't have gotten here without my loving wife, my three daughters, my mother, my mother-in-law, and my great mother-in-law. So without them, they've been my rock the whole time. So thank you guys so much for helping me do this.
Well, welcome to Fort Thomas. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
I know we had a, it was a fun interview. I think the mayor and Mr. Dill and myself would attest that your interview was, was fun. It was great. He had some audio visuals from his children. So that was pretty neat.
My pockets full of good lucks.
We're welcome.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you very much. All right. We are in visitors' communications. Is there anyone who would like to address council on any topic? So please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Terry Webster, 14, Earnsliff Court. I'm just here to thank you guys. Several months ago, when I brought the idea of a fairness ordinance, I was completely unsure how it would be received. And as a chance just to observe the process, I have been terribly, terribly impressed by, marked by your committee and the work that you have done. Adam and Roger, you guys are on that committee too, and you've, you've helped with the city attorney, to look at this from all angles and to present a very, very good ordinance, which fits Fort Thomas very nicely. And I don't presume to predict how things will work the rest of the night, but I want to tell you as a dad how much it means to me, knowing that my son will have the same rights and protections that I do. And that's, that's what it is for me and for our whole community. But once again, thank you guys very, very much. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council?
Friends, Mayor Haas, council. My name is Chris Hartman. I've visited you all several months ago now. I'm the executive director of the Fairness Campaign, and I just wanted to reiterate the thanks. I shared with, I shared with council member Bowman when I came in. I said it used to be a year and a half, two years ago, I would come to a city where they were passing fairness ordinance or considering it, and we'd show up two hours early, and the room would already be full with people with very strong opinions on both sides. And we're not seeing that any longer. Here in northern Kentucky especially, you all will, if you approve the fairness ordinance tonight, you'll become the fifth city in northern Kentucky and the 17th city in the Commonwealth of Kentucky to pass this type of ordinance to protect LGBTQ people in the same way you protect everyone else in your community. And it will happen with little fanfare, and that is the true progress of, of the way we've seen this movement work and the way that I've seen legislation get passed up here in northern Kentucky. I've been incredibly impressed with the respectful tone here and in the other cities that we've seen passing these ordinances recently. And I just want to, again, extend my, my incredible gratitude for your all's thoughtfulness, for the time that you've spent on this, to once again, to council member Bowman for bringing it up, and to you all for being receptive of the conversation. Again, I want to continue to be a resource in any way that I can for folks, but I'm just happy to be up here to watch you all take the vote and hopefully, again, become the 17th city in the Commonwealth to extend these protections that I wish we would have statewide. But you all hopefully will add to the momentum to get us to that point where we won't just have 25% of Kentucky's population covered, but eventually we'll have 100%. So thank you all very much tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Okay, moving right around, reports of officers. City administrators report. Mr. Dill.
Okay. I really don't have a lot to report tonight. I do have a couple of requests of council. First, I'll report that updating our, our IT website selection. We've actually had some productive meetings with some potential providers to update our, take over our website. As you all know, we've, we've lost contact with our informatics group from NKU, so we're looking to fill that gap. And we have found that our platform is fine, that people can, can step in and work within the platform that we're in. So we're not talking about huge costs to engage somebody in that process. We think we have a couple of viable candidates, and Joe's worked really hard with, at the staff level, working toward that. So I think we're in a position that we'll be bringing somebody on board and updating our website and doing that work very quickly, within the next 30 days. So that's good news to report. A couple of other things with council. We've kind of had a little bit of conversation, and I think I brought it up at the last meeting, about trying to get a joint meeting with the school board. We're still working on that. So why I have everybody here, the school board group is available on Monday, January 20th. That is Martin Luther King holiday. We've always moved our meetings to avoid that, but at this point, that's the best possible date. It's the day before when we would have had our regular meeting. Didn't know if council had an ability to make a commitment at this point, but I would like to get that on the calendar.
We're having a regular meeting on the following Tuesday, the 21st.
No, we will not have a meeting on the 21st. This meeting was in lieu of our meeting on the 21st. What time are you thinking about?
What time?
Well, we haven't set a time, but probably in the evening at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock is what we were looking.
Do you know where?
Probably at their facility at 20 grand.
Oh, that'd be cool. Sure.
Just so council can be in that.
Okay, right.
And it would be advertised as a special meeting. And we would have a specific agenda, obviously, as a special meeting. Does that seem to work? I think that might be a go. Thank you.
Awesome.
The next item is really committees that we're going to be asking council to join staff. And one is the public work committee that meets in January. So I originally asked you all to hold a meeting on the 21st in the evening. Not sure if you want to do back-to-back nights, but I do have the public work committee and the finance committee that I would like to get scheduled. So if you want to do something that next evening, we could just plan to do that.
I'm good with public work.
I mean, I don't.
So you want to hold two committees on the evening?
Yes, back-to-back.
Okay.
But we don't have a council meeting, so we'll do them at 4:00 or 5:30, somewhere in the late afternoon. I can confirm the times, but those are the two committees that we're looking to get together.
Well, I mean, it also might be convenient to do right after the joint meeting with the school board.
Yeah, that's possible.
If you want, yeah, I mean, I guess it'd be my preference. That meeting may run a little bit long. At least in the past, it has tended to go a little bit long because we tend to have a lot of topics between the school and the city to discuss. Okay, so they're not having, I thought it was before their board meeting?
No, no.
Oh, it's not?
That is not before.
Okay, yeah, then, all right, never mind on that.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll reach out to council to confirm those dates, but if you're not opposed to, two nights in a row.
Yeah. Get them done, get them over with.
Fair enough. That's really all I had. So I thank you. Unless anybody had any questions?
I have a 3:00 that day, so.
We can do that.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, we have nine old business, nine new business. Discussion of proposed tank redesign study.
Yes. As you all have probably witnessed, some communication from our public regarding the tank redesign study, that's been in the works for about nine months. We've mentioned that in the past meetings. They're drawing to kind of a, a close with that process, and they're conducting public meetings. In fact, they have one going on this evening. The local administrators are invited to a meeting specific for the city representatives tomorrow, which I will be attending. But they are recommending some changes in, in what they're offering in their routes. And it does affect the city of Fort Thomas routes. So I will actually get more information about that. It's posted online. I put it on the agenda because there was some potential for it to be a conversation, potentially with residents coming here, so we wanted to make sure that we were able to discuss it if we needed to. But it's really a work in progress moving forward. We will engage at the city leader level, and they're conducting public meetings for open forum. And then they hold meetings at the fiscal court. And just for point of reference, two years ago, we went through a similar process with them where they reduced some of their route delivery. We participated in those meetings. We will continue to participate in those meetings. Ultimately, the fiscal court votes to finance the tank budget through the respective fiscal courts. But there is a reduction in, in what they're offering in our community.
I was, I was in attendance at today's meeting, and I had a discussion with, I guess, Andrew Aiello, their general manager. But compared to what are the last round of changes were, this is far more drastic. I mean, it'll, it basically takes Fort Thomas off their map. So anything we can do to advocate for the continuation of public service, I questioned him about right sizing their vehicles, and, you know, as, if you don't have the riders, why don't you use little shuttles? And he said, well, most of the cost is, is in the driver of the vehicle, and that might be a 10% savings or so, estimated. But Fort Thomas is basically taken off the map. So I hope there's something we can do to advocate.
There was a meeting today at the South Bank, South Bank. City managers and, and the mayor's group met together today, this morning, and this was part of the topic too. And one of the things they're proposing, or Tank is not proposing, but a side company to do an Uber-like addition to supplement where the buses are taken away. The way it's being proposed, I don't feel comfortable in it because they're looking for additional revenue from the cities to fund this, but we already have tax revenues funding Tank. But the concept of Tank eventually going to an app related thing that is more focused on when ridership is needed is maybe a possibility. We had that meeting today. There's several other meetings. There's also the mayor's, Campbell County mayor's meeting is the 26th or 28th, whatever that Tuesday is of this month. And Andy will be at that meeting as well to discuss the Tank. And so at least they're being open-minded and having discussions with people. And I think Ron's right, we have to stay on top of this. And I, and I've received several emails from people about this issue. And, you know, one of the, the first things that's been repeated several times is, like, the 11, this 11 route's supposed to be eliminated completely, 16 is still there. But at least looking at rush hour time and looking at making adjustments to the schedule rather than eliminating it completely. So yes, it's high on the list of what we have to stay on top of to see how we can keep service in Fort Thomas.
I hope we do.
Anthony and Ken, did they talk about specific numbers and the cost of these routes and, you know, what, apparently they're raising money.
I mean, they hit a lot of statistics about ridership declines and how, you know, we compared to other cities too. But not a lot of other proposals on the table as far as solutions, whether that be more put into advertising and promoting bus ridership, you know, other, other things, other than just erasing routes off the map. There weren't a lot of other alternative proposals. But yeah, there was a lot of statistical analysis that was, you know, presented in a PowerPoint.
The one they did present that is a little bit forward-thinking is the idea of park-and-ride locations to encourage more use of that. And there is some sense on that, but if you don't have a car, that doesn't, that doesn't really go.
Exactly. I mean, a lot of the census that's using the buses, a park-and-ride is not an option, you know, unless they Uber to the park-and-ride location, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not practical.
I think that, that drop-off was in, in Newport, and it's just, it's just not, there's, there's a part of our population that utilizes bus that we have to, you know, make sure that we're doing everything to kind of bring everybody in.
Sure.
You know, it's a really tough issue, and then, and we felt it the last time when they reduced service to our routes. This time, there's an actual elimination of that, and that's a pretty drastic step, but it's not surprising in, in that it's come that far, just because of the resources that are required to run routes. And when you have specific conversation, the ridership is always the issue. If you're not picking people up and they're not paying to be transported, then, you know, the return-on investment of running them there, it isn't there. We've had similar conversations in our last come, go-around with them, two years ago, about the size of the vehicles, and that really is not a huge cost savings for them. It's really the time spent servicing those areas without gaining ridership. So it's really difficult. But it's a major step because it eliminates the 11 route completely. And the 16 route only enters in as far as St. Ease. And the express route on 27 that, you know, touches our city a little bit. But that's, it's very minimal in terms of what the service would provide in Fort Thomas, the way it's presently being presented.
This is all supposed to be on Tank's website now, too, all the proposed changes. Anybody wants to look at it?
So we will report in the future.
All right, discussion of city alcohol, beverage regulations.
This is a, a topic, and Mr. Blau had asked that we include it. Again, because we're in a special meeting, I put it on the agenda. Don't know where we want to go with the discussion exactly, so I'll, I'll kind of turn it over to the thoughts to you at this point.
Sure. You know, typically, I would say that most stuff would go through, you know, a certain committee before it comes here. This being a simple change, and all three committee members being here, I'd like to be more proactive on this instead of reactive, because other cities are making adjustments at this time. Currently on Sundays, our sale of alcohol are at 11:00 a.m. Currently right now, Newport is 9:00 a.m. And tomorrow, Bellevue will be voting on their city council, their city council meeting, for probably a 9:00 a.m. change. I have their coordinates in front of me. I got it from Frank, the city administrator, the other day. They will then have a special, if everything is approved, which it should be, they have a couple people that still want 6:00 a.m. there. If a couple, if they approve it, they can actually have another special meeting the following day to vote in the place, and it'll take shape in a week or two hour long that takes. The only reason I'm bringing it up is I just like to be proactive instead of reactive on this stuff. I've talked to some other cities around here, South Gate, Highland, High School Springs, to try to get everybody along. I think that we need to give our businesses the opportunity to sell earlier if they want to be competitive with outside markets. So I think it's unfair that we talk about it, possibly put it in Jan's hand. I'm not saying we vote tonight, but if everybody agrees to it, you know, then maybe put Jan's hands the right ordinance and we vote on it next time. I just didn't feel like this simple subject was worth having a special meeting for Dave, Mark, and Roger to meet about something they were going to meet here tonight, and just didn't want to waste their time if they had agreed to it. It's really just that simple.
Will the process be to move for a committee meeting to discuss it with the appropriate committee, like labor law lessons?
I don't think it's necessary. If they feel that it is necessary to meet with them, they're all three sitting right here, but if they feel that they need to, I have, just so everybody knows, I have spoken to every single business in town. We've got one of the owners, Marathon, right there. I even spoke to a couple businesses that are proposed to be in town. I've talked to everybody from the Marathon to the, Ameristop to 915, to the Fort Thomas Pizza, to the Shell Station, and every single owner, BP, Highland and Grand, and everybody's in favor of it, anybody that would directly affect. So it's really a pretty simple change. So that's why, that's the only reason why, if these, if these committee members feel that they need to discuss it further, please take it to committee first. I just didn't, I didn't want, like I said before, I'll say it again, I want to be proactive instead of reactive. I'd like to get ahead of this so that we're not behind people and give our, I'd like to pro-business and make sure that they have the same opportunities that people around this state.
So it's two additional hours on Sunday? Adam? I mean, for me, that's a simple change. I'd be okay not having a committee, but I would defer to my other committee members on that.
Yeah, I think as long as we're kind of keeping things uniform with, that's kind of the theme of what we try to do, is keep things uniform with other cities in, in the region and in the county. I guess Jan could pull some ordinances to see, you know, what.
Now, you're saying they're doing 6:00 a.m.?
Well, I, I personally like 6:00 a.m. Because.
Somebody said 2:00.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, I was saying 2:00, they're doing 9:00 a.m. It's statewide ordinances, and I talked to Frank about this too, so I've talked to local committees and made sure that they got their approval as well. The statewide ordinance is 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. And I think everybody here remembers this any time, there's no alcohol on Sundays, and beer only, and beer at 1:00, and beer and alcohol, and then Ken Lewis, Danny Ordeo got arrested, and now it's 11:00 a.m. And now, I think Alexandria is 6:00 a.m. right now, Silver Grove is 6:00 a.m., Covington is 9:00 a.m. Who else? South Gate is 11:00 still, which still, I talked to the mayor Hamburg there a couple days ago, let him know what we were doing, because he would be the last piece of the puzzle on this 471. Like I said, I just want to make sure, I like all of our communities to be on the same page with everything, I would not want to depth, obviously. So that's kind of where I stand on that. If you guys have any issues, I just want to get Jan to go forward so we can have that special meeting and bring everybody up for that.
I advise you, that uniformity is a thing of its own, a thing that you do sell. And you can, it's a pretty simple change, you have a draft, first reading after the next meeting.
So is, is the draft two hours, or?
Well, what'd you guys like? I would like 6:00 a.m.
That's where the committee meetings come in handy, to hash these things out.
Well, it's 9:00 a.m., it's universal, it's, it's thing.
I mean, I would prefer.
Dayton, Highland, and Highland Heights and High School Springs are all 11:00 a.m.
Yes.
This is part of the topic.
Yeah.
You're suggesting they're in the process of changing?
Bellevue's in the process of changing right now, from South Gate to 11:00. So it would say 4:00, it would say 9:00 a.m.
And we're currently 11:00?
Yeah, we're currently 11:00. You know, with, in, in these days and age two, with World Cup and the NFL packages overseas, you know, and St. Patrick's Day falling, I don't think it would be a big adjustment. It just gives people an opportunity to sell if they want to. That's all I'm saying, is give the businesses their own opportunity to sell, to be competitive with the surrounding markets. And Bellevue and Newport would be our biggest competition, especially depth.
So Bellevue hasn't passed the ordinance yet, so everybody right now is 11:00 uniformly?
No, no, Newport's 9:00 a.m.
Newport's 9:00 a.m.
Bellevue will pass at least 10:00 a.m., but their ordinance right now, as it's written to present to council, is 9:00 a.m.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have first reading, won't be till, it'll be quite a while before you have first read, right?
Yeah, that's why I kind of didn't want to delay, because then we'd have another committee meeting, Dave might be out of town, and then we'd be another, they'll be farther behind people as far as that goes.
Well, we can get an updated meeting, that's a pretty easy change, if we want to make it after meeting. I mean, I think I said.
I mean, you could meet immediately prior to your council meeting committee as well.
Yeah, okay.
And, and review a draft and an ordinance.
I mean, we, I think it would be important to know if staff could just monitor that and let us know what the staff says in these other cities. Yes, not complicated, there are a lot of discussions.
I do know that, you know, Bellevue has had some opposition to certain timeframes because some of their businesses are feeling obligated to open earlier when it's not really their model to do so.
Right.
But to be competitive, they're going to have to open earlier if, if they pass an ordinance and everybody else opens earlier, so.
Adam, what was the consensus from business owners that you talked to?
Everybody in Fort Thomas absolutely wants it.
I mean, they're all open anyway, if you're talking about services, they're all open anyway, I guess it would be, I don't even know when depth's open.
It would give some of the bars opportunities to open, maybe they're now earlier to run a branch or something like that. Like, you know, but like I said, in Bellevue, it's gonna happen in Bellevue, they're either gonna be 10:00 or 9:00, but they're putting it together for 9:00. They actually, most of their city council wants 6:00 a.m., but a couple of them want 10:00, so they kind of met in the middle of 9:00 to match it.
What about if we do this? Why don't we draft an ordinance with the 9:00 a.m. time slot and plan on having that committee meeting meet before the next council meeting to review it? And by that time, we'll know what some of the other cities have done, and it would, should be simple enough to change the time from one time to another time, and then vote, have the first reading at the February meeting. Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next item. This is the fun part, implementation of the city community plan. Take it away. This is the song and dance area, guys, just so you know.
I'm gonna go out.
Okay.
I'm gonna get some steps in tonight.
And I'm gonna raise my chair so I'm just right in front of this, so you can't see it. No, I'm gonna leave. You know, Mayor? Yes? We have some folks here that are interested in official action on some of these things, and those tend to be fairly routine. Wouldn't it make sense to do that before that we go through this, in case anybody, you know, doesn't want to take the time?
Oh, that's probably a good idea.
To sit through.
I mean, some of the ordinances that we're gonna, that we have people waiting.
Roger throws up ice for people, must be election year.
Ron, are you okay with?
I'm fine. I'm just gonna miss out if they leave, that's all.
Well, they could certainly.
Ron wants an audience.
All right.
You're not gonna want to miss it.
So we've got ordinances to adopt, right? Official action. And. Ordinances, quickly. And finance committee report. What committee report? Finance. No. It doesn't take action? No, no.
Or you just, you just want to finish the meeting and then go back?
Yeah. We'll just go.
Yeah.
Finish the meeting and go back.
Sorry.
Okay.
Report of disbursements.
Yes, go ahead.
Report of disbursements, December 14th through 2000, through January 3rd, 2020. General fund, eighty-seven thousand, one forty-six thirteen. Tower Park Fund, six hundred forty thousand, six hundred forty dollars and sixty-three cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, two hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and two cents. Reoccurring debt service fund, one thousand one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD revitalization, seven hundred forty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Waste fees, ninety-five thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and two cents. Police and fire pension fund, one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-one cents. Total, four hundred forty-eight, four hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee, recommend that warrants numbered six eight four zero through six nine two two be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Cameron member.
Entertained motion.
Consider approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Right, ordinance O-18, fairness ordinance.
This is a summary of ordinance O-18, 2019, an ordinance creating a new chapter of the City of Fort Thomas Code of Ordinances to prohibit certain discriminatory practices within the city. This ordinance adopts a policy to promote fair treatment and equal opportunity for all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, over the age of forty, disability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or familial status. All claims filed with the city's fairness officer alleging discrimination, unemployment, public accommodations, housing, financial and credit transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, age over forty, familial status, and disability shall be referred to the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights for Investigation and Enforcement in accordance with the Kentucky Civil Rights Act. The city shall reserve the resolution of all claims of discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Complaints may be filed, investigations conducted, conciliation attempted, and if necessary, hearings held.
Entertained motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I want to have a little bit of discussion, I just want to make a couple of statements. I've talked to a number of citizens and received a number of emails, and I appreciate everybody's endeavor to make this happen. There isn't anybody I talk to that is against the idea of fairness for everybody. But there are people who are concerned about this being more of a political issue and really shouldn't be at the city level. I personally am concerned from a liability standpoint for the city to put that onus on us to have to deal with this particular issue. As the ordinance states, everything else is handled by the Kentucky Humanities, or whatever the name is called. It really should be done at a state level, and I think even folks involved understand that that's, they prefer that it would be at a state level, or even at a federal level, that we didn't have to do this at a local level. So, I am concerned about that, I've had a number of people express concern, they prefer that we did not do it, and I just wanted to share that because it was brought to my attention, so. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, ordinance O-21, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance O-21, 2019, an ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z-04, 2019, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-13, 2012, by changing the zoner district of real estate herein after described from professional office to general commercial for 14 North Grand Avenue. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at 14 North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial.
All right. Yep, well, that's a.
I move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, ordinance O-21, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance O-21, 2019, an ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z-04, 2019, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-13, 2012, by changing the zoner district of real estate herein after described from professional office to general commercial for 14 North Grand Avenue. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at 14 North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial.
All right. Yep, well, that's a.
I move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, ordinance O-21, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance O-21, 2019, an ordinance amending the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, be amended to add residential uses as regulation, as regulated herein, as permitted in a general, general commercial zoning district under Article 10 Zone Regulation, subsection 10.12, General Commercial Zone, subsection A, uses permitted, and to include residential uses, shall be restricted to floors other than the ground floor. Residential floor space shall not exceed a ratio of two to one of the other permitted uses in the structure to Article 10 Zone Regulation, section 10.12, General Commercial Zone, G C, section E, other developmental controls. The official zoning ordinance known is hereby amended by adding residential uses as a permitted use in the general commercial zone, and this use shall be restricted to floors other than the ground floor.
Motion, please.
I'd move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, ordinance O-21, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance O-21, 2019, an ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z-04, 2019, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-13, 2012, by changing the zoner district of real estate herein after described from professional office to general commercial for 14 North Grand Avenue. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at 14 North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial.
All right. Yep, well, that's a.
I move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, ordinance O-21, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance O-21, 2019, an ordinance accepting the recommendations of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z-04, 2019, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-13, 2012, by changing the zoner district of real estate herein after described from professional office to general commercial for 14 North Grand Avenue. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at 14 North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at 14 North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial.
All right. Yep, well, that's a.
I move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Ordinance O-1, 2020, oh.
This is the one we don't like. Ordinance number O-01, 2020, an ordinance confirming the city engineer's estimate of the cost of the improvement and certificate of apportionment for the improvement of Fairfield Place from its intersection with Sherman Avenue to its terminus, Grant Street from its intersection with Alexandria Pike to its intersection with Sheridan Avenue, North Fort Thomas Avenue from its intersection with Covert Run to its intersection with Lincoln Red, across that. Ohio Avenue from its intersection with Taylor Avenue to its terminus, Ridgeway Avenue from its intersection with Ohio Avenue to its terminus, Sheridan Avenue from its intersection with Grant Street to its terminus, Sherman Avenue, to its terminus, East Vernon Lane, West Vernon Lane, and South Vernon Lane, beginning with East Vernon Lane from its intersection with Highland Avenue, continuing to South Vernon Lane, and continuing to West Vernon Lane, to its ending intersection with Highland Avenue, all in the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereto, as submitted by the city engineer and is approved by the Board of Council, approving and levying a special assessment against the abutting property owners and providing for its payment, directing the city clerk to publish an abstract of this ordinance, and directing the city treasurer to prepare and distribute the assessment bills, requiring all abutting property owners to pay the improvement assessment. That assessment rates are set out below per linear foot, and fronting unlisted streets are assessed against said real estate and the owners thereof, as stated, cost per foot is set out as follows. Fairview Place, six dollars and twenty-one cents, Grant Street, nine dollars and twenty-one cents, Ohio Avenue, nine dollars and three cents, Ridgeway Avenue, seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, Sheridan Avenue, seven dollars and eighty-four cents, Sherman Avenue, eight dollars and eight cents, East, West, and North Vernon Lane, six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Are you finished?
No.
I missed it, can you repeat that?
No.
Okay. That's a first reading, so no action is required on that. And we have one executive order, Executive O-01, 2020.
Executive Order E-01, 2020, an executive order appointing Matt Feit as a probationary firefighter, paramedic, grade three B, for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky Fire Department, and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year.
Awesome. Now the song and dance.
All right. I think we should do a song and dance session.
As long as I don't have to dance. Well, I'm very excited to be before council tonight. This man needs no introduction, I think you all know Chris Manning with Human Nature, who has been working with our staff on implementation of the plan. I stand before you today, I, first of all, commend the prior council and this council for the action they've taken to get us to this point. I always told my kids growing up, things don't happen by accident all the time. That right there represents things that don't happen by accident. You know, we went through a process, a year-long process, engaging our community to create our community plan, and I think we did a great job, and it's being recognized outside this room, for the team that we put together, the effort that we made, the process that we used, and I think that's really important. And this council's chosen to pick up that momentum and kind of carry us to the next step of implementation. So, we challenged ourselves at the beginning of the last year, this time last year, when this council came on board about implementation, and we worked through the first quarter of the year with myself kind of leading in charge, and trying to intermingle the implementation process with other things that we do every day in our community, and it was a challenge. And, again, I commend council, I think it was in our finance committee meeting, they're like, look, we, for us to do a really good job doing implementation, we probably need to bring some outside resource to help me direct our staff and work individually to accomplish some of the things and keep that momentum. That's where this young man joined the group, and since then, we've had measurable progress, and that's why we're here tonight. So, we would really like to kind of walk you through the process, and it's pretty impressive, you all see it and hear it on a month-to-month basis, we live it every day, as far as what we're doing in the city and the way that we work as our staff, we have a great staff, and the community feels it, and we all feel it. But sometimes it's nice to pause and stop and look at where we are. Having said that, we would like to get to the point where we're focusing on a next block, which would be this coming year, and where that might lead us. So, we'd like to touch on where we've been, and talk about the things that are in front of us, and Chris and I are gonna do that together. So, with that, I guess we'll start you through our program, if I can get it to move. we have working committees, implementation tools, project updates, and then we'll talk about next steps. You want to talk about how we got?
Sure. First, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mayor and Council for the opportunity to be part of this, you know, I'm used to being part of the visioning and the planning, and I'm used to doing construction documents and following things, but that gap in between of strategy, I don't get to do that often enough, and it's really fun to roll up my sleeves, work with the committees, work with Ron, with the mayor, so thank you for the opportunity, it's, it's a lot of fun. So, we've been having committee meetings, and this is how it's sort of broken down so everyone can understand. Public Works, Parks and Recreation in particular, have been the most active to date. Buildings and utilities are ramping up, and as I was talking to Roger earlier, funding is going to get very important very soon, we're getting to that point where we need to really prioritize and start to lay out budgets for all these fun projects, so, that's coming. And we've also developed some new tools, kind of building upon some of the tools that we developed in the community plan. We have these project implementation worksheets, they're built in Excel, so everybody has access to them, can use them, and you can see at the bottom kind of how it's structured, you have the, the area, you have the project, responsible committees and contact people, you have a calendar in the middle, funding and partnerships, and then comments and notes to the right. Right now, we have five of them, we have a Tower Park and Midway District working sheet, we have a Town Center District working sheet, Highland Hills Park, major corridors, and then kind of a catch-all for other projects. That will continue to evolve, so this is very much a working tool, not a static tool, and we use it every time we need. And Chris, you know how much we, he likes the sticky notes?
Yeah.
So, in our first session, that, what you see in front of you was blank, and it took the entire table in the Centennial Room, and we started there, and it's been a great tool for us.
That's because all these blocks were the size of the sticky notes. It was huge.
So, that was our starting point, and it's allowed us to stay on task. More importantly, it's allowed us to project forward, not just, you know, month-to-month, but really in a longer term, and we have kind of a three-year block, where we're starting to move everything into an appropriate location, and base it off of a reality of where it might fall in place in the plan. So, with that, we'll move into the project updates, and there's, there's a lot of them. We're gonna start off with the Tower Park Midway District area, and we're gonna start at the entrance, the Tower Park, and sort of move our way in. So, we've made some improvements around the tower not too long ago, there's a beautiful kind of building upon that, and this is our icon, this is an entrance to a regional destination park. We're talking about improving all the crosswalks and the intersection, creating another plaza on the other side, complimentary, and that, that's where the location of the General Thomas statue will go when the funding is complete for that, but you can kind of see how those things complement one another, and it really celebrates the entrance to the park, makes it safer. We're also investigating the possibility that day before we stop, which we hope we can accomplish as part of these improvements over time. So, really celebrating the gateway to Tower Park.
Let me just add that, you know, as we go through these, just kind of capture the concept that maybe we, all of our projects are really designed to have an initiative of a purpose, and it, it's an improvement, it's safety conscious, so there's always the undertone of providing a safe atmosphere, and then the last thing is a sense of place. So, if you picture these things as we go through them, those are some of the underlying themes that go throughout our plan.
And that's as we move into the park, we're talking about some related intersection improvements, as we complete the parking and roadway improvements around the mess hall in conjunction with Alexander Circle. This intersection takes on more importance, we were able to solve some of the alignment issues that have been a challenge for a long, long time, again, improve crossings, improve four-way stop kind of conditions, make them all ninety degrees. Also gives us the opportunity to create a new trailhead, here, this is one of the major trailheads, and Tower Park can create some amenities that we go with that, and then to create a very clear threshold where the residential parking is for the homes to the, to the west, creating a threshold there with some signage and planting, so it's clearly that that's more residential parking. So, those are some things as we move into the park, and then continuing further in, of course, there's the bigger project of the improvements to the roadways and the parking around the mess hall in partnership with what's going on with Alexander Circle. So, this plan kind of represents that. As we do that, of course, we're talking about some improvements around the mess hall itself, there's a big need to improve the plantings around the mess hall, and so, to the lower left, there's a proposed landscape enhancement plan for the park, and we're working with Allison on that. And you can see to the right, lower right, some in-progress construction of the parking area around the mess hall, so it'll really become more usable for the mess hall, and area around the mess hall, so it will really become more usable for the mess hall, and it's also a place where we can hold more community events.
And the details here, as you all know, because we approved funding, was done in warm, safe and dry, not only on this building, but the armory building, which were really important first steps. And, you know, it's kind of, I always use the analogy, the dirty carpet and the brand-new couch kind of a thing. It really creates those eyesore of where you're lacking, and Chris mentioned the landscaping. When this is said and done, you know, the landscaping in front of the building with the new paint and the finishes are important, and all those details are in all the plans. The view that you see looking at the side of the mess hall is under construction, but when it's completed, it'll have a networked sidewalk, it'll have lighting that's appropriate for the parking and the walkways, you'll have a landscaped area, so it all comes together as this thing progresses.
And one of the other components that's going to need an upgrade as everything around it starts to look fresh and new is the softball field itself. And so, this is more of a diagram than a firm design plan at this point, but we're really looking at some improvements in the softball field to make it function better, make it drain better, a new restroom that is closer to the new parking, and so as we do the events there, sort of dual use there, a new small shelter and playground in that area, which would be great for the Alexander Circle residents, but also for people who may be looking for a smaller picnic shelter playground as an alternative to the main line. And then netting and new fencing, new bleachers that decode, you know, all of these things again with plantings surrounding it, kind of completely upgraded the softball field. The zip line, a ropes course that was proposed in the community plan behind mess hall, just reporting progress on that. We had hoped to be identified a potential operating partner. It turns out they're more of a design builder than they are an operator. That was a company out of Rick, Carolina's. So, we're sort of stepping back again, looking for that partner, doing kind of a national search for that partner, and the project won't move forward until we have that project partner to help us implement the course and then manage and operate it. So, depending on who that is, if it ever happens, the design of the course, of course, will evolve with that. And then as we move further in, of course, these are some up-to-date photographs of the progress at Alexander Circle. It's really, really exciting to see that happening, you know, both the inside and outside. I didn't take any inside photographs, but the insides are progressing as well. You can kind of see the new facade, some of the new colors, the new roofs, new windows, new garage that's going on.
New house.
And a new house. So, really exciting progress, and I know we worked for decades to make this possible, but to see it actually happening is pretty amazing.
And, you know, going back to that, I was going to quit, so I've kind of updated council throughout where they are. First of all, this type of weather will go miles to completing this project because the site development aspect is really lagged behind kind of where the homes have gotten to. But the better weather, the utilities are all in place now, so, you know, it was completely built. This is really like a new subdivision except structured globally. So, all the underground utilities are all brand-new and everything, but they are all in place now, and of course, we had an obligation to do a ring-like new street, which we completed. In fact, I think we foreed the sidewalk in that picture on the bottom left, or we're scheduled to fore that tomorrow, and that'll be the last second the city has any obligation to do with the project. But all of the paving areas, we'll go back a couple of slides into the parking in this vicinity around the mess hall, that will all be resurfaced in the spring, all that sidewalk work around the new parking areas will be completed, and all the paving around Alexander Circle will be completed.
Is that your house still?
Yes. And I would expect occupancy, first occupancy to be in here probably at the end of the first quarter, early second quarter of the year.
I have to give the developer a lot of credit, they, you know, serving on the design review board, they had to come through our meetings like four times, and we put them through their paces. They were very patient, very responsive, and the results are showing out with the quality of the work that they're doing, so it's really exciting to see that.
And I've been inside some of the houses, and I've been impressed with the quality of materials they're using, you know, they're doing a really good job.
And I know you've seen this before, and there's a plan just like this that's posted out on the site actually, but this is the Shelter Three area, and construction has started on that area. The old shelter has been taken down, the bid for the new shelter has been approved, and so a combination of contractors and city crews will be building this over the next several months.
Again, if we have this weather, this will come out of the ground and the available, you know, probably by mid-summer.
And we work with communities all over the Midwest, and I have to say, and it's one of the things that makes Fort Thomas special too, is all the work that our city crews do in partnership with contractors, with developers. It's, not everybody does that, and very few do as well as Fort Thomas. And we're also looking at the Staples Building, you know, we continue to chip away at the possibility of owning that one day and operating it and celebrating it as a gathering space, and we're talking about, you know, improvements around that building that add to the parking, clarify circulation, improve pedestrian crosswalks, you know, all around the VA and the Staples Building area. So, these are some plans, some studies to improve parking, increase the number of parking, that we hope to move forward as progress is made with the Staples Building.
I would just add, and you all know this, we're continuing conversation with the VA, who is a really important potential partner in the Midway District. Their presence is there, depends on who we're dealing with there, how receptive they are, but we do have a year at this point that may allow us to move in progress with some connectivity. Certainly, they can't help but lead over into our properties, and we would like to have that reciprocated with some of the potential for parking in the Midway District. So, we're still exploring those ideas, and the concept that you see here, we actually have some other ones that extend out onto the streetscape and involve some of the VA property as well, so we hope to get to that point.
And the Midway District is doing really well and needs more parking, so I think that would be synergistic with all the businesses there. So, we moved from Tower Park Midway to Town Center, CBD, and of course, I'm sure everybody's noticed the difference there, One Highland, demolition of several structures has taken place. These are some up-to-date photographs, so all the buildings are down. There's still some foundation walls and other things that will come out, but exciting new project right in the center of the crossroads of our community, and these are some plans and duty of engineering that the developer is going to have to let. And then with the city building, consultant team has been selected, led by Joe Hayes, who's done such a wonderful job on our schools. He's the architect on the theme, and the current work is focused on some of the basic costs. We need to investigate roof, windows, HVAC, and what are some of the base needs that we need to address before we go to some of the big changes.
And just as an update to that, actually Joe and I scheduled a meeting later this week, you know, we kind of dissected this project potential in millionth sections, and the first one, you know, is our, again, I use the term warm, safe and dry all the time, but, you know, our needs were roof, and our windows, our HVAC, our true infrastructure to the building is the starting point, and he has completed that evaluation and we start talking about that, which will allow us to have the next conversations about service delivery, and then potentially the building facade or the streetscape that leads to the building. So, we're kind of at the brink there, and obviously, part of that conversation will include, and you'll hear us at the conclusion, talk about financing, revenue streams, and those types of things. We're kind of getting to that point. We know we have to do certain things in this building, how we're going to accomplish the other things will start to take shape in this process to begin in the next month or two.
Does this also work on the garages and the parking as well, or is this just a building?
Well, no, it's focused on the entire site.
That's what I was.
And then speaking of context, you know, city building, One Highland exists in CBD area, and as CBD continues to thrive and grow and see progress made, we know that parking is going to be one of the issues that will need to be addressed, and we'd like to be proactive about that and really need to do more of a parking study, understand where the existing parking is, where there is potential more parking, and then how we better connect parking and do lane finding so people can get to it, and then once they're out of their car, they can get to the businesses. And so, really looking at that as the next step, understand what the parking resources are, and what they need to do in the future for this other business district.
And we've had just very preliminary discussions about what approach it might be to take place with that, and we're kind of minding that field a little bit, if you will, because there'll be key players with new properties in our other business district to accomplish all these things, Chris just brought up. So, we're taking first steps toward identifying that and then being able to pull it all together in a whole district one step.
And we move to Highland Hills Park, and for anyone who hikes, you'll notice there's been just incredible progress made on the trails at Highland Hills Park, and thanks in large part to a lot of volunteers and city crews. This is the current trail plan. That's kind of encouraging everybody to get out and find creative ways to use the trails, and there's talk of an annual five-k event that's being planned, we've been talking to Parks and Rec staff about that. But it's just exciting to see the trail system evolve there and become such a great asset and, again, to create some, you know, basically make the happen.
You know, on that, are there trail maps available there? I couldn't find a link on the city website.
I think they're posted in the rec, under the record part there, all these maps, and then there's also the ones that go throughout the community where there are emblems out there on the sidewalks where you can check your mileage and it's all.
I think there are hard copies on paper available, like by the tennis courts.
Yeah, there's, first thing are inner parks, they're available in the office, but I think they're also posted on the records section of the website, so I'll double check.
Well, maybe as we make improvements to our website.
It'll be easier.
Easier to find, yes.
I mean, I don't think you could, for example, you couldn't search for, maybe that's sites not searched, a lot of them really aren't exactly anymore.
No, it's such an active community, and maybe those resources available would be a good thing. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac, right there where the golf park is, talking about improvements to that area, functional improvements to the golf park, cul-de-sac, the street really needs to be repaved, curbs need to be improved, sidewalk extended, a lot of these proposed improvements were in the community plan, and then Ron recently shared them with a group of volunteers.
Yes, and we're really excited, you know, this is, I've referenced a number of times, this is the most used facility we have. This facility, the golf park, gets used every single day. I don't care if it's a holiday, I don't care if it's raining, or snow on the ground, somebody's taking their dog to the golf park literally every single day.
Yeah, but everybody just keeps saying it's gone to the dogs.
I teed that one up there.
Yeah.
But I'm excited because, you know, we placed this a number of years ago, and it was never really designed to have a full complement of amenity to it, and I think the roof is there. They have a Facebook page, over 400 people that follow, there are regular members there, members, I say their users. They recently, you know, kind of collaborated with us now to talk about the types of things that are most important, and in fact, I met with their leadership group this morning, and they did an online poll, they had good response, they prioritized, you know, kind of, hey, we like a lot of things, but here, what we've identified is the most important thing. And they understand that that's the best way to approach the city. They're willing to do types of fundraising and events and so forth, volunteer days, so we're really excited about the possibility of the golf park, because it's a great amenity, it exists there, and, like I said, it's the most used facility we have, and it shows where, and having, you know, kind of a design concept to it that we're just starting to get to within the park itself will help the sustainability of it all come. And I would also just point out, and you see on this diagram, and maybe our other slide shows that too, but there is a kind of a comprehensive effort to create a walkability within the park. You know, Highland Park existed for a long time, but you walk the street, and that's a problem.
And one of the stories, you walk the street.
Everybody walks the street. In the back park, when we did the basing and the new shelters, it kind of stopped, really your pedestrian assets stopped at the ball field. There is a plan to do work along the front of the ball field, and then, as you can see here, that concept kind of picked up, and there'll be a continuation of an actual paved or path along the entire ridge, and then, of course, it'll connect to the trail ends within our park. And partnerships are really important in all of our parks, and the folks that have assembled to represent themselves, with the golf park is another representation of how important it is, and I think we'll see as a community the benefit of that as we start to engage with them and the amenities that we can provide in the golf park, and that's duplicated with the baseball team in the school district, which is a conversation we might have in the next meeting, but that duplication is really important in our park system.
And one of the closing discussion remarks that we want to make is about the potential for Parks Advisory Council to kind of celebrate that sense of volunteerism throughout our park system, so we'll get to that towards the end, but this is a great example of how we're talking about it. And then we have the baseball field, you know, improvements are underway there, turf in the infield, the Dummer bricks are looking for a home, probably connecting the benches and again along the roadway.
You can see the end of the walkway there, and bottom right somewhere. So, that'll be extended across this front.
And then there's fill operations happening in the lower area there where the tennis courts, volleyball used to be. This is a great plan, kind of roughly showing what the limits of that fill area going to be, and then consistent with the community plan, you know, we would look at improved parking and pedestrian licenses and trailhead splash park in this area once those fill operations are kind of settled in.
What is the status of that, the fill?
The fill that's been placed there to date has really just been generated from projects the city's been doing. We haven't opened that as a fill project. We do have required permits from SBD One. I've had conversations with the affected abiding property owners, although we haven't finalized any details, and that was just the red line that you see there, for example, the one on the right is Judge Fulger's property, and I've met with Sandy and Nikki, I've met with the swim club, and whether they allow that temporary encroachment would just change how we grade, but the intention here is the project at One Highland is to bring that fill material in, and it'll be done very quickly. It'll be placed as a controlled fill, and we won't have a prolonged, you know, intrusion of trucks bringing fill in there, it'll be condensed into a very short timeframe.
I mean, is it really extensive or, I mean, it seems like I heard about a project being a lot of fill needed, you know, left to go.
Well, it's being held in for free, so the only thing you have to do is grade it and patch it, that's all.
And we move from Highland Hills Park to some of our major corridor projects. You know, one of the most exciting committees that we had in our community plan was the Regional Partnerships and Collaboration Committee, and in that committee, this idea of talking to our neighbors and collaborating on major projects like US-27 kind of came out of that, and then naturally got this attraction in this US-27 Smart Corridor Group has really started to formalize and meet monthly, talking about reselling and funding together, so there's a local agreement between several of the cities and the county, and then the list of supporting partners, this isn't everybody, but some of the key ones on that list is growing, so just a lot of momentum and a lot of potential, US-27 Smart Corridor, and again, that sort of grew out of some of the community work in the community plan.
And I think you'll have, you know, kind of kudos to the council for being involved at that level, I have been, and Will Wabber's kind of been our point person, the Economic Development Director at Campbell County, kind of scheduling our meetings. Development Director of Campbell County, kind of scheduling our meetings. It's really kind of neat that this really sprung from our efforts in our community plan. The Regional Collaboration Committee didn't exist at any point in the past. And this is a direct result of that committee kind of stretching our boundaries. And it's pretty exciting that the group has really truly been meeting for almost two years monthly. And it's grown exponentially to include a number of partners, OKI. And I think there's a long list of other partners beyond the end of local agreement. With a lot of momentum and discussion and we're kind of getting to the point where we're organized and we've added all the topic areas that we'll start to see some progress with some realities. Newport has a grant for vote portion of 27 and that's going to kind of serve as the starting point, literally, figuratively and otherwise, where there's selections made about streetcaping and lane, road diets. There's discussion about those topics. We've interacted with TAN and other service providers. The idea of the connectivity between N T U and the levee is really strong in terms of the support of the entire group. And I'm really excited about where this could be, not just through the four towns, but how it will link everything around this.
For the region.
For the region. And really serve as kind of that, that study where I think it'll be duplicated in the region and other parts of the country, quite honestly, if it picks somewhere that it's out.
And then Route Eight, to the bottom left, you see an analysis that was produced by C T itself. It's kind of documenting where some of the movement areas have been and what the current conditions are there. And then to the right, you see the image that's in the community plan, which really for the first time, started to look at a bold idea for what Route Eight could be. The idea is that it's a very big park. And so the Route Eight evolves into more of a park-like road. Traffic is slowed down. We have stops, crossings, trailheads. We have the on-road trails, trails connecting up to our major assets. We have water trails, canoe kayak input takeout places. So that's the vision. And so interestingly, we would have had to approach KYTC anyway to start to work towards that vision. It just got sort of accelerated with some of the conditions that we have. And so we've been working really hard to remind everyone about this vision and start to sort of catalyze the partners together. How can we get from where we are to that? How can we work together? The county's going to be part of that. Utility companies are going to be part of that. And really an important partner is going to be South Bank. Because being part of the Green Park Commons six city vision, we can pursue state and federal funds with South Bank as a partner to make phased implementation of this vision. So they're going to be key as we go through that. But so are these partnerships. And so how do we fund these things? How do we fund local matches? How do we engage the county effectively? How do we partner with utility companies? These are all things that we're working on.
How do we agree with KYTC on what a stop means?
Yes. Well, I mean, what is the latest comment? Is there any, you know, like recent update or is that?
You know, there's a lot of, we're still awaiting an update of the study that Sand Tech did in 2016 for KYTC. They've recommissioned a kind of an addendum or a restudy of this area. It's due out at any time. Really we're working with Bob Yager at KYTC. Utility companies are very organized in terms of their effort to address how important it is as a service provider of utility, what it means to them respectively.
Water sanitation.
Water sanitation. Due to energy, they have a major transmission line that runs down there and serves over half of Campbell County. CSX, who has already seen some of the movement that's causing issues with their system. So there's a lot of players in there that are really affected by the outcomes here. There's huge price tags to the traditional method of approaching what we do with the street or this roadway. Getting a step back from that and then putting it into some realities and maybe embracing this concept that it doesn't have to be what it was before, but it's really important is where we're trying to lead the conversation. It's important to our community. It's important to the county. It's important to all of Campbell County. But, you know, where we land on that thing is still very much evolving.
It's going to take time to evolve. It's going to take time to implement. It's going to be in phases. Hopefully we can have a shared vision and be working towards incremental change over time in partnership. And, you know, taking some of the burden frankly off of KYTC because there was just such diminished ridership when compared to 27, 471, double A. That's where all the numbers are going. So they can't justify the investment in Route Eight anymore. And so we have to work with all of our partners to measure what we want to do. And now we have a vision for what we want to do. So how do we do that? And then Grand Avenue, you know, there was a lot of discussion and it's been explored a little bit before, possibility of a road diet. That came out again in the community plan. The idea of a roundabout at Highland Grand, major gateway into the city. That's picking up steam. There's been some initial study of the roundabout. We've done some initial costing of that. But we need to go further into some engineering. Need to go further into revisiting the road diet and what that means exactly. But the idea that it becomes a more pedestrian oriented, more neighborhood friendly, slowing traffic down type of street is really exciting and consistent with the community plan.
And the involvement with KYTC is critical here, but this represents a project where there's a lot of potential for other funding mechanisms outside the city. It's a safe route. You know, this type of activity creates certain, I guess, strengths in where there's opportunities for money from a federal level and perhaps even at a state level to accomplish some of these things. So we'll be exploring that. And this is in concept, but KYTC is also partnering with us in this process to assist with the studies. There is a lot of traffic impact studies now up Grand Avenue. So we'll have current numbers that'll help us, you know, evaluate what potential there is for the road diet.
And we got Houston City, Joe Fisher, who's excited about this project and is involved at the state level to try to help find some funding to make it happen. So that's a good thing.
Partner like that?
Yeah.
And then smaller roadway project, but a very important one from a safety standpoint, James Avenue and Highland. As you know, that intersection has been a safety problem. And one of the issues there is the vertical alignment. You know, as you're trying to exit, you're facing uphill. It's difficult to see oncoming traffic. It's certainly difficult to see pedestrians. And now that Moyer has, you know, finished his project and with that circulation there, it's time to really make some improvements to the San James and the safety intersection enhancements. And this is a study that C T did to show how that grading works. You have a plan at the top and the cross section just below it to show how we're extending a flat spot at the intersection. It will require some retaining walls to the sides to limit impacts to the adjacent buildings and residences. But as you can see from the plan, I think that's very good.
And the residents.
Yes. Any committee, there was a request that we have a follow-up meeting with the school board about this, as well as the swim club. And those are the things that.
And, you know, this concept, obviously, you know, from a timing aspect, it's really important from the safety standpoint. But, you know, the fill project will take place in the spring. This project will obviously follow that up.
And then there's been some concerns expressed by citizens at the waterworks Memorial Intersection. And so the city explored several options for how to deal with that. This was the preferred option, which is very inexpensive but very effective. And so this is a view that was put out by C T for some striping and intermediate sort of bollard reflectors there to slow people down and they turn in.
I just saw that being implemented down in Bellevue as well.
It's a very low cost but effective method. And, you know, it can't even be a temporary thing. It could move to some more long-term improvements and a more landscape in the future. But it's a great.
You just always want landscaping, don't you?
I know.
That's what it is.
You know me too well.
I do. So that joint state route, does that require KYTC approval?
No, no, it'll be governed within our city right away.
Because I know somebody who would contest it, Senator Schroeder.
Yeah, I saw that response, but it wasn't, I thought the same thing. It's not on a state route.
I talked to him this week. So we're all clear on that.
And then a few other projects that I'd want to know about. So the Parks and Economic Studies Committee has been working diligently to locate some exercise equipment in Ross Park, which we have that wonderful loop path. And then the community plan, there was a lot of discussion about using that for more health and wellness programming. And so we've selected some workout equipment and we've selected the locations of those. These are pictures. We have some elliptical types and some press types and room to add over the course of time. But we selected the equipment and the manufacturer and even the color.
And we're getting ready to select our partners to help us pay for it. That's on our next step.
So good work from the committee on that. And then, you know, some of the downstream recommendations from the community plan was we need to update our subdivision regs and our, I mean, that have ever needed. And so that'll require reconvening the Land Use and Zoning Committee, working with Planning Commission, again, probably hiring some outside help to lead everyone through that process. So just wanted to put that on your radar to it's needed, it was recommended, and we're getting to the point where it's time to do that.
Yeah, so we're working on a timeline of now of how that might take place. That would all go through the Planning Commission. And just for reference, subdivision regulations would be approved by the Planning Commission. The zoning code would apply as council approval. But the Planning Commission would work with the staff and any support, the program to review our zoning code, but ultimately be approved by council. But we're looking at initiating that again in the first quarter of this year with the timeline that's moved by one of the council.
What's an example of subdivision regulation?
Subdivision regulations would regulate any development of new projects or property. So for example, you know, it would dictate installation of all the infrastructure.
Carbon.
Carbon dollar, pavement composition, storm sewer, sidewalks, width of streets, you know, anything related, really anything misplaced within the right of the right country. And then it also deals with any potential land destruction.
For a long time, all of the county used the same subdivision regs. And of course, Port Thomas and Iron Anatomy is a lot different than Boone County or Cutting District. So we really have to kind of right-size and customize the subdivision regs with our conditions.
And I can tell you, when I started here, the subdivision regulation had been approved in like 1936 and updated periodically until 1985. So we did a total rewrite back in the early 90s. And then it's just been tweaked since then. But yeah, for now, we don't have a lot of vacant property out. It's either this larger subdivision that would fall near that document, but it's really important that it does. But we'll update it on a more comprehensive level this time.
And then, again, this is where the Parks Advisory Council comes out. It's the last bullet on there. But we're also talking about, you know, as we work on all these exciting projects and we move them along on paper, at some point we have to talk about priorities and budgets, phasing, implementation strategy. And so we're getting to that point, which means reconvening the funding and finance team in developing those priorities and budgets and being created of balanced partnerships and all the things that we talked about. And then following up on the Parks 707, really moving this conversation forward about Parks Advisory Council as a way to leverage all the energy and passion and vision of our citizens to be partners, advancing the parks.
So as you can see, we've accomplished a lot, you all, all of us, that we've accomplished a lot. We've nearly, we laid the groundwork the right way with the plan itself. The worst thing can happen to a plan, and I've seen it in other communities and a little bit in my tenure with the city, is that it sits too long. This plan never got a chance to sit. It has no bus on it. And that's a testament to the will of our community, to the council, to our staff to move forward. And we're pretty excited about how far we've come. And that's a lot. What we just talked about is a lot. And, you know, working with, working with the mayor and all the people that have started to engage, you know, from the golf park people to, you know, Joe Citizen on the street that has an opinion, it's all starting to come together to this. There's a lot of things that are there. A lot of them are there attainable. Some of them are conceptual. Some of them are more initiative versus a project. The prioritization can be really important. And the discussion at some point has to come back to, you know, the funding and capital. And that's, you know, our request to keep the finance committee and then our funding and implementation group to convene. Chris mentioned the park advisory, thinking our last recreation committee. They're probably going to have next meeting as a public, open public meeting, open public forum, because they've accomplished a lot of conversation about a lot of areas in the park. I was kidding about the person that's going to select, the person that's going to pay for the equipment. That's, you know, half joking. I mean, we have to have partners for some of this. We have to have other revenue sharing. It's not going to be absorbed in the city budget. But, you know, there's people out there, there's resources out there that, you know, we've started bringing in to bring a lot of these things out. We're really excited about how far we've come. We're really excited about what's next. I see this year being as productive as last year. So hopefully we're sitting here a year from now and it's not just this, it's the next thing and the next thing for two years and three years out and where that might be to us. And we certainly have accomplished a lot of this project into improvement. Just wanted to take the opportunity to update council. Again, it's great work. I appreciate the opportunity to work with Chris. Makes our job a lot easier when we have somebody that's kind of focused on this and driving the bus a little bit when we can't. But we're really excited about how far we've come. Do you know if anybody had any questions?
Great job.
Ron, Chris, thanks very much. It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you all for staying and listening.
Very good.
Well, that's how, you know, that's how things are going to get done. This is, it's been my experience on council that having system involvement is really what makes things happen in this city. And you can't handle citizen involvement really without a vision. And I think this is a fabulous vision. I mean, some of these things are, you know, really transformative. Riverfront, US 27 corridor, things like that are, you know, very long-term, very transformative things. Other things are, you know, more like immediate enhancements. You know, if we can find the funding for some of these things, show immediate results. I think it really creates a great vision long-term for the citizens that this community worked for. So I think it's great. Thanks, Chris.
Chris, you're great. Honestly, Roger made the suggestion earlier, bring someone off. Have to take a little bit of a look.
Ron's there too.
I just want to add on, in case you forgot.
He might go into an office thinking he's not great, but I'm telling you, he's God. He's a human whisperer. Don't drop him.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. We are near the end of our meeting. I'll entertain a motion. If someone.
We go into executive session.
Yes.
For discussions regarding appointing a permanent employee within the safety department.
Yes.
Do we need a second and a vote on that?
We need a statute.
Jan, do we need a second and a vote?
We need a second and a vote. Usually we refer to the statute.
Oh, 61.810.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that?
It's so helpful to have statutes memorized. It's so helpful to have statutes memorized.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Peanen.
All right, thank you all very much. We are going into executive session. We'll come back and officially adjourn the meeting, but we don't anticipate any action.